I went through the same thing. I finally had it retitled in California to me.
Right.
And then retitled it in Florida.
Well, the problem is that my cousin is in California trying to title up a car and have.
Yeah, we're live and we're live. Yeah, we're live and we're live. Just so you know, this is people here.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll talk to you about our first step.
Okay.
Yeah, let's go. Yeah, let's tell you.
You've got the mask, it doesn't matter.
What's that?
You've got a mask on, it doesn't matter.
I love it. All right. Great to see her. You guys join us.
Hey, um, what else?
Relied everybody to see you now.
Well.
That's a good deal.
Good afternoon, everybody. Um, like to call back to order the Pasco County Board of County Commission meeting for September twenty first, two thousand and twenty. And also remind everyone to silence your cellular devices at this time, as well as if we can mute our microphones if you're not speaking. We're going to go ahead and proceed with the public hearing agenda, starting with item P one ordinances. Madam Clerk, do we have proof for item P one?
Yes, item P one was published in the Tampa Bay Times, June twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty.
Thank you, ma'am. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. Item P one is PDD twenty zero seven five five, and this is the adoption hearing on this item. It's an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use maps, map two dash fifteen, and sheet oh four, changing from rez three to rez six, excuse me, on approximately thirty-seven-point-seven-seven acres of real property located on the east side of Colony Road, south of Fair Winds Road, approximately half a mile north of State Route fifty-two, with associated subarea policy, future land use seven-point-one-point-five-four Colony Road, and an amendment to the future land use subarea map two dash nine fifty-four Colony Road, providing for repealer severability and an effective date. Today, we ask that you adopt this ordinance by roll call vote.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions before I go to public comment? Questions from the board? No questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up via WebEx or any emails in reference to this item?
For P one, no one has on the WebEx link, and there's no email.
Excellent. Okay, do we have anybody?
There should be an applicant for this, however.
Okay. I didn't see him on there, so. Hold on, I think I still got, I didn't get to ask if there's anybody at the kiosk. Sorry. Is anybody at the kiosk?
There is nobody at the kiosk.
All right, does the applicant have anything to say, or would you like us to go ahead and move forward? All right, see. Is there anybody, don't see anybody on there?
I'm here, Mr. Chair. Barbara Will Hyde, on behalf of the applicant. I've been recognized, and we support the best recommendation.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Any questions for the applicant? See, now it is back to the board. A motion and a second. This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Starkey. District three, Commissioner Starkey.
I don't think she's on.
District four, Commissioner Wells.
Aye.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District two, Chairman Moore.
Aye, motion passes four zero. Thank you. All right, give me one sec here. Okay. Okay, so now we're going to go ahead and move on to the next.
Commissioner Moore, I did vote yes.
I.
Commissioner Moore, I did vote yes.
Okay, I, we couldn't hear you, I'm sorry. All right, we'll jot it down. Thank you. Now, we're going to proceed with the procedures for rezonings. Mr. County Attorney, Mr. Stein Snyder, please review the procedures for rezonings.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to. There are two rezoning agendas, regular and consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If staff or planning commission has recommended approval, and there's no opposition, the application will be considered by the Board without further presentation. If staff or planning commission has recommended denial, or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation, the opposition will be given three minutes for each individual, four or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation, or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning, may at this time request a petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address, and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public support or opposition of an application is insufficient for this Board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria found within the Board's Land Development Code.
All right, thank you so much. Today, we have five public hearings on the consent agenda. These items will be approved by one vote without a presentation unless there is someone here in objection. Those that are pre-registered are at the public comment kiosk to speak to any of the items on the public hearing agenda. Prior to speaking, you'll be sworn in by the clerk. So at this time, Madam Clerk, for the list provided, if you could swear in each person individually per agenda, or actually, I don't like that, let's just go ahead and do them all at once.
Okay. If you are here to speak on the public hearing items, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God?
I'm pretty sure everybody said I do. Okay, Ms. Hernandez? Go to P two.
Item P two was published in the Tampa Bay Times, August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty.
P two is PDD twenty CU thirty-six, conditional use and operating permit. Cypress Preserve A forty-one LLC, land excavation MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development District, comes here with a recommendation to continue to the ten-six-twenty BCC meeting at one-thirty in Dade City.
Yeah, I do have, before we take a motion, I do have to ask for public comment.
No, no, it was.
I thought you said last time I did.
It was advertised, this was advertised as a continuance.
Oh, it was advertised as a continuance?
Yeah.
Well, there we go, that's even better.
Who to continue time certain?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Mariano, I have a second by Commissioner Oakley to continue this item to a time certain on ten-six in Dade City, at one-thirty. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Wells.
Aye.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District two, Chairman Moore.
Aye, motion passes five zero, thank you. P three is being withdrawn.
I'd like to state the publication record.
Please go ahead.
Item P three was published in the Tampa Bay Times on June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty, thank you.
You can read the title, it was withdrawn if you want.
PDD twenty CU twenty, CNRV Enterprises LLC, T-Mobile Reliant Towers. This was withdrawn by the applicant, so no action is required today.
Thank you. Okay, P four, moving on with the consent. Madam Clerk, please.
Publication.
Publication, yeah.
Yes. P four was published in the Tampa Bay Times, August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty.
P four is PDD twenty-seven-three-five-two, Paul Materials, MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development District, RBR Properties of West Florida LLC. It's a rezoning request from AC Agricultural District, C two General Commercial District, and I One Line Industrial Park District, to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to allow the construction of an industrial material sorting facility, five hundred thousand square feet of industrial and one hundred and fifty thousand square feet of commercial on approximately sixty-five-point-seventy-one acres. Comes here with a recommendation of approval with conditions from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Do we have anybody on WebEx signed up to speak on this item?
No one has signed up on WebEx to speak to this item.
Email.
Or email.
No?
Nope.
Anybody at the kiosk to speak to item P four?
There is nobody at the kiosk for that item.
Okay, thank you. Leave on consent. P five. Publication, please.
Sorry.
Okay. And now, we're like, we're a little lost up here today, right? There's a lot of, a lot of things going on.
Item P five was published in the Tampa Bay Times on August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty.
PDD twenty-seven-four-nine-four, Paul F. and Beverly A. Reinsmith, is for a change in zoning from MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to an AR Agricultural Residential District, comes here with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Is there anybody signed up to object to this item via WebEx, email?
No one has signed up for P five, WebEx, or email.
Anybody at the kiosk?
There is nobody at the kiosk for that item.
All right, we'll leave that on consent. P eight.
Item P eight was published in the Tampa Bay Times on August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty.
PDD twenty-seven-four-nine-four, seven-four-nine-five, rather, Earl J. Bartholomew, changed in zoning from AR Agricultural Residential District, and AC Agricultural District, and a C two General Commercial District, to a C two General Commercial District, comes here with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Do we have anybody on WebEx signed up to speak on this item?
No one has signed up on WebEx to speak to this item.
Email.
Or email.
No?
Nope.
Anybody at the kiosk to speak to item P four?
There is nobody at the kiosk for that item.
Okay, thank you. Leave on consent. P five. Publication, please.
Sorry.
Okay. And now, we're like, we're a little lost up here today, right? There's a lot of, a lot of things going on.
Item P five was published in the Tampa Bay Times on August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty.
PDD twenty-seven-four-nine-four, Paul F. and Beverly A. Reinsmith, is for a change in zoning from MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to an AR Agricultural Residential District, comes here with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Is there anybody signed up to object to this item via WebEx, email?
No one has signed up for P five, WebEx, or email.
Anybody at the kiosk?
There is nobody at the kiosk for that item.
All right, thank you. No objection, leave on consent. P six, I know we have somebody signed up, if I'm not correct, so before we get to it, we do have somebody, I think at this time.
At the kiosk.
Okay, go ahead and read the publication, please.
Yes, it was published, P six was published in the Tampa Bay Times, August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty.
Okay.
P twenty, PDD twenty-seven-four-nine-four, seven-four-nine-five, rather, Earl J. Bartholomew, changed in zoning from AR Agricultural Residential District, and AC Agricultural District, and a C two General Commercial District, to a C two General Commercial District, comes here with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
Thank you. So, do we have anybody in addition on WebEx or any emails?
No one has signed up on WebEx and no emails on this item.
So, we do have one person at the kiosk if, that states they would like to object to this item. Go ahead and just, for the record, if you could pull that up real quick, at the kiosk.
For the record, the person at the kiosk is Mr. Bartholomew, who's the applicant.
Oh, okay, so nobody in objection to this item?
Let's double check, just in case.
Okay.
Here's Mr. Bartholomew on the screen.
No objections, just here if there's any questions.
Okay, so we do not have anybody that's here to object to this item, so with that, we will leave it on consent. Thank you. P seven?
Item P seven was published in the Tampa Bay Times on August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty.
PDD twenty-seven-four-nine-eight, in the name of Brandon Ray Sotomayor, for a change in zoning from AC Agricultural District to an AR Agricultural Residential District. The applicant has voluntarily agreed to record a deed restriction limiting it to two lots and one residential dwelling unit on each lot, comes here with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Do we have anybody sign up via WebEx or any emails in objection? Did we?
No, no one signed up via WebEx or email.
Anybody at the kiosk?
There is nobody at the kiosk for that item.
All right, we'll leave that on consent. P eight?
Item P eight was published in Tampa Bay Times on August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty.
This item is a transmittal item to the DEO. PDD twenty-zero-seven-three-nine, it's a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, CPAL twenty-oh-nine, for the Trinity Corporate Center, transmittal of proposed large-scale comprehensive plan amendments to the future land use map two dash fifteen and sheet nineteen, changing from IL Industrial Light to PD Plan Development on approximately sixty-five acres of real property, a tax amendment creating subarea policy, future land use seven-point-one-point-five-five, Trinity Corporate Center, and an amendment to the future land use map two dash nine, adding subarea map two dash nine fifty-five, Trinity Corporate Center. Again, this is just a transmittal, that you authorize transmittal to the Department of Economic Opportunity and other reviewing agencies.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have anybody signed up in objection to this item on either WebEx or email?
No one on WebEx or email.
Anybody at the kiosk?
There is nobody for that item at the kiosk.
With that, we'll leave on consent, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some move?
A motion by Commissioner Oakley, a second by Commissioner Mariano. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Wells.
Aye.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District two, Chairman Moore.
Aye, motion passes five zero, thank you. Now, we're going to move on to the regular public hearing items. Each one will be presented by staff and the applicant. I will call for public comment in each one of those, and we have one. P nine.
Yes. Item P nine was published in the Tampa Bay Times on August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, and August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty.
Good afternoon, Joanne Ravita, Real Property and Planning. The real property team has received a petition to vacate a portion of a platted drainage and access easement filed by Shashanka Kemful. Petitioner has requested the vacation for the purpose of constructing a deck, and is requesting to vacate only five feet of the fifteen-foot easement. There were no objections to this petition. The team recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions? Questions? Comments? No?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Was the CDD contacted about this easement?
Yes, it was. They executed a, an encroachment easement for the petitioner to build this deck.
All right, so you, but you didn't upload that into Sire?
I did not.
Okay. But, so, CDD has no objection to their, to their easement being vacated?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have anybody signed up via WebEx or email?
The applicant had signed up through WebEx, and that's all.
Okay, great. Do we have anybody at the kiosk?
There is nobody at the kiosk for this item.
Would the applicant like to comment on this item, or answer any questions?
He was here just for a matter of, if there were questions.
Okay.
Seeing no one move for approval. Second.
A motion and a second, a motion by Commissioner Wells, and I think I got it, a second by Commissioner Oakley. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Wells.
Aye.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District two, Chairman Moore.
Aye, motion passes five zero, thank you for that. And we do have one more item remaining, but that will come back to us at five fifteen. We're all used on your edging or seats at home watching this. So, we would go back to, what do you say, is it R?
R three.
R three? Let's go back to R three, continue that.
All right. Good afternoon, Justin Grant, Director, Public Infrastructure, Fiscal and Business Administration. This is the continuation of R three earlier this afternoon, presenting dredging options. I'll wait here for a moment, I'm going to pull up the presentation, we have some visual aids for you guys. Perfect, thank you. Okay, so the aim here is to generally define the benefiting areas for assessment, right? So, indirect to direct benefiting. So, going right to left on that map there, you're looking at the section B there in yellow, going to section A. Dividing lines there are west of Little Road and west of US nineteen, and the two smaller areas there pictured is Hudson and Gulf Harbors. Those are, you guys are familiar with those boundary lines, and then the table here to the lefts gives you a pictorial of how many parcels are in each one of those areas, and if you add Hudson and Gulf Harbors, that makes the fifth division of areas. Recognize there's limitations to this analysis. This slide and the very next slide is for illustration and estimation purposes only. If the Board should move, choose to move forward, any special assessment district would require legal definitions for the exact benefits and assessments. Next slide, please. So, this slide is put together here to give everything on a one million dollar cost of construction. So, everything on an incremental basis, this is basically perspective to look at what that would cost from the different units. On an MSU for west of Little Road, you're looking at about two-twenty-five, four-fifty for the MSU west of nineteen, MSBU looking at three-seventy-five for that area, and then a combined MSBU, this would be Gulf Harbors and Hudson put together, that would be eighteen-seventy-five. Obviously, that number's larger due to the smaller number of parcels contained within that. You have the millage, the top two there are MSTUs, those use millage methodology, and the bottom two are MSBUs that use flat assessments. Okay, I believe that is the, great. Branford can bring us up to wrap up. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Justin. Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners, Branford Adumua, Public Works Director. So, what are the next steps? We will pursue grants to help reduce the cost of the project. Please note, most grants require matching funds on our part. We will bring back before the Board an assessment methodology and rate for a MSBU or MSTU based on commission direction today. We do recommend an MSBU for an assessment methodology for this project. We will meanwhile secure temporary funding in public works for the permitting and design of the project. The funds will be reimbursed later. We will also need one full-time project management position in public works to manage dredging projects. Permitting, design, and procurement for completing the project will take between eighteen to twenty-four months. And this concludes our presentation. If you have any further questions, we are available to address them.
Before I, if you don't want me to ask a question, you're stating that the time to permit, design, and the procurement is twenty-five months, so do we have a guesstimate on the advice from the consultant on how long the project itself would take?
For the construction?
Correct.
Six months, six months, yes.
Oh, wow, so, okay. So, it's twenty-five for the permitting, except only six months to construct, okay. Commissioner Mariano?
And this is early in the stage, and I think if you've heard the presentation today when we talked about the coastal restoration, call it a, taking back the jurisdiction with DEP, is a huge game changer from all the numbers that we've seen already. If we can take back jurisdiction, we'll save a lot of that permitting time and cost, and talking to the consultant, he agrees a hundred percent, that's the time to go take a look at everything. So, I think the next thing we need to do is really follow that through. They say we should be able to get that permit answer within thirty days, and I think from there, we can then go take a look at where we're at. Part of the reason we wanted GBA to stop was because once you initiate a permit with DEP, you have to stick with it. We didn't want to have that interview, didn't want to have that meeting, and that's why they kind of stopped where they're at. But it's going to be very easy to pick up and go from there. One thing I will say as the Chair of the Restore Act Committee, when we do the approvals of the pot one money for the first allocation and the pot three money, everyone said they thought dredging was a good application of that money. I think the committee will still feel that way, we do need to get people in at some point. But I don't think we're ready either for that yet because we don't know how the numbers are going to play out. The aquatic preserve was a big conversation we had this spring, the legislature was passing that through. If the DEP approves what we're pulling back, ninety-nine percent of everything we talked about, and we're worried about that aquatic preserve will go away, it will come under this as a existing channel already, it simplifies that whole process. So, I think we can take all that permitting process, and now it's on us, that permitting might be able to get done within two or three months, just in the meantime. I think it's good to look at the MSU, and Mike, you've heard.
The brilliance of your paving assessments you had done, I feel I'm being heard better now.
Yes.
The brilliance of what you had done with the Highlands paving assessment, who we had the whole Highlands community, different levels of service were needed up and down, and we took the whole thing, we set up nine different segments, even though it's the same MSBU. I think it's a similar approach here, because let's say if Gulf Harbors just needs, you know, fifty grand worth of work, then that's what their share should be. If Hudson needs a bit more, then so be it, and up and down the whole coast, I think it's an easy allocation. I think it's important, and maybe we'll get more from OMB about this, but I think the TIF is going to be the ultimate way to go and the fairest way to go, because it'll be less impact-filled, but financially, it could be the most lucrative. When word gets out and we start the dredging up and down this coast, and already, I'm hearing very, very positive things up and down about, they're excited about the dredging, they want to see it come quicker, they want to see it happen, they know it's going to improve the neighborhood value, they know it's going to improve the up and down area, and let's face it, US nineteen, if it gets this boost, will be phenomenally improved. And I think you'll see a lot of great things happen just naturally. So, somehow, we need to work with OMB, let them figure out how we could do a tax increment financing program with this, so that that can actually help pay for a lot of this cost. And we talked before this morning about there are some tweaking that need to be done, some studies need to be done, because there's already some existing TIF that we need to look and maybe separate out, so that can be a conversation, maybe we can start now, now we kind of get some good groundwork, and maybe in the next thirty days or sixty days, maybe come back with a better plan to do that. But I think the MSBU would be, would be well-received, I think the TIF would be even more well-received, and we might even find with Restore Act money coming out that we can make this a very affordable program that will benefit the citizens all over the county every step of the way.
Mr. Biels, you have a question?
All right, just a couple notes on that. You know, there are three counties that have had delegated authority from DEP, and I've looked at all the documents, and unless we get a special agreement with DEP, none of them allow them to permit their own work. So, that's going to be a hurdle we're going to have to jump over. Every one of them requires their own permits to still go through DEP, so that's going to be an issue we're going to have to deal with, which may or may not help this. Furthermore, those agreements have been not just for specific things, but have been generally globally with respect to DEP permits, so anyway, with respect to the TIF, I'm not sure if you're referring to the current transportation TIF or a different one, and I think they're going to need some clarification as to what you're referring to with respect to the TIF.
Well, and this morning, he came to me to talk about, oh, you can't have two TIFs in the same spot, so that may be something that does have to get discussed and gone through, how are we going to make it happen? I think for West Pasco, you know, if I had to look at transportation, do I really need a transportation MCFV, or do I need dredging? I think up and down, we'll say that this would definitely be the way to go for it, but that's something we can take a look at. As far as the permitting with DEP, with what we have for pre-existing canals between, before April third, nineteen seventy, I think it's a discussion from what I'm hearing, that we can actually segregate out what we can do.
Just wanted to put caution on the delegation. The delegation, if their maintenance dredge is, yeah, that's, that's different than dredging your channel, but.
Right, and that's, that's everything we're looking at right now? Everything we're talking about is just all channels existing before nineteen seventy. So, I'm not looking to go outside that scope I'm sticking, all right? Small focus. I don't want to change anything else that Swiftman's doing, DEB's doing, I want to just work on the maintenance channels, so I can change the bureaucracy from just dealing with the state and the Army Corps, to stick right in Pasco County. And I think we have already a coastal person already in place that can start, but we can but we can bring a dredging person on full-time, which I think would be a good benefit as well to make sure these things get well. And it could be even a partial position, I don't know. We can look at it as it comes out.
So I've looked at the three other delegations, and none of them allow the county to permit themselves.
If it's a maintenance channel?
It's just, the language is, any permit done by the jurisdiction has to go to DEP. It's flat out in every one of their agreements. So that's an issue we'd have to deal with on that.
Anyway, have we submitted that, Mike?
I'll have to check with staff. There are some, there's some more detail that we think we're going to need to add to it. Of course, the, you know, the DEP will probably come back with requests for additional information as we go through it. We still have time, you know, given, you know, if the direction is to continue moving with the project, we're going to probably have to put out a solicitation for a consultant anyways, which is about a six-month process. So before we would even begin the final design efforts. We could certainly work all that in parallel, which will be a good thing. So we're excited about it. Staff is looking into all the historical documents, some of the work that we can build on with GBA that shows, you know, the underwater surveys will be helpful in that matter. But we've got a little more information we've got to put into it for DEP.
And again, I'm comfortable taking these next steps to go forward. The wind talking to the consultant thinks if we do get this done, it'll be a tremendous savings for us in time, energy, et cetera. So I think it's something we can get done based upon what the other three have done without even doing anywhere near what they're doing. I'm just trying to look at the channels that we built pre-nineteen seventy, April third.
I have a couple of questions, too. Talk to me about some of the possible grant opportunities that are out there. I know typically there is a match to it, but which ones do we think we have the best chance of acquiring?
So there are a number of grants out there, Commissioner, to discuss specifics. I'm not really prepared to talk about the specific grants. There are a lot of opportunities, but each grant has its own specific, narrow, little thing to it, right? So some grants you may need to make sure you're doing X and not Y. And so part of the direction that we'd be looking for from the board is to go ahead and be able to expend resources. We want to go out and put a serious effort into it, knowing that as we put together a funding mechanism, we're going to be able to say in those grant applications, yeah, we're going to be able to come up with a match. We're going to be able to have, you know, a mechanism to pay. So there is a little bit of some start that we need. Restore is obviously an alternative, that's real money that's there. But there are a number of other federal grants. It just, again, it depends on what you're going to do with the dredging spoils and the type of work that you're doing.
There was a gentleman, as we all know, named Alan Rose, that sends us emails on a pretty consistent basis and shows opportunities. And I did talk to Dan about some of those, and we know that some are attainable and possibly, they would have worked twenty or thirty years ago, if I'm not correct, with some of those opportunities.
Some of that's attainable, and some of that is probably not permissible.
Not permissible anymore. But from those lists he sends, are some of those grants possible opportunities of what you're speaking of?
On the surface, perhaps. On others, like Dan said, you know, we can't go out and create coastal barriers on top of seawards.
And I understand they would not be allowed these days, but some of the other opportunities. I just bring that up as an example because I know he has approached us on numerous occasions and has sent multiple. So obviously, he's done some, you know, some due diligence about opportunities there. Commissioner Mariano?
Yes, and there are some grants, one that we're looking at right now with Congresswoman Bill O'Rourke's office, the CHAFI grant that's out there, that's a huge amount of money that we could tap into that ties right into the coastal preservation. Oyster beds, oyster, there's all sorts of money available for that as well. So forming a bajetti, as we've talked, these things can go around. The other permitting of the islands would be tough, et cetera. But there's so many opportunities out there to get it for anything to improve water quality. And I think you were talking about the Venice project, I don't know if it's the same one I'm thinking of, but that was water quality funded across the board. That ties in very close to what we're doing here in the Hudson Channel, the numbers, et cetera. What we've got to do is get down to the source of what the problem is. Now, just to kind of highlight, I was going to get this in the committee reports, but I'll go over it now. We had Nine Florida out at Hudson Beach because there was some rumors around, okay, are the pipes going under the canals? And that's what's causing the leaking, et cetera, et cetera. So we went with Nine Florida, and I heard this before, but I wanted to get it verified. So, by the way, Mike, thank you for setting up that meeting, that was phenomenal. They've got plastic pipe going up and down Clark Street, Harbor Drive, Old Dixie, et cetera. All brand-new stuff that's not leaking whatsoever. Some stuff can get in there, but it's not causing anything that's going to get out. And there's nothing going under the canals. So one of the things we have to do is we've got to isolate where that pollution's coming from. We find it's at the base where the shrimpers are. We find it's also coincidentally out by the pavilion of Hudson with Hudson Beaches. It's also on the Skeleton Key exit going out where there's a lot of bacteria there. And we're probably going to struggle with trying to figure out exact one there. Could be boaters dropping the stuff before they kind of get inside.
Yeah.
When I look at Hudson Beach at low tide, and we're just kind of out there the other day when we had Nine Florida out there, I'm looking at all the birds. I mean, you had blackbirds, seagulls, you had ducks. Everybody's out there in like a feeding frenzy in that area. Well, while all the birds are there, guess what they're going to do? Leave their poop, right? That's going to go. I think that's partly what those numbers are coming up to be. So when we go look at putting that seawall going all the way around there and raise it all up, you're not going to have that feeding frenzy anymore, and you're going to be able to control that bacteria. If we can isolate to the bacteria like they did down at Venice, we can go then get extra grant funding to say, here's what we're going to do, here's what it's going to prevent. So it is an exciting process right now, but it's going to just take a little bit more diagrams to go forward. Staff's, I think, already got their report that's already been sent back to DEP to what we found, and we're going to take that next step with them to work with them. But there's so much money in water quality. The governor was just talking about it this past week, how much money's out there. So water quality is critical, and that's what all these things will do going out forward. And we might even find there's some silt on some of these dredged projects that's coming right from the roadway. Well, should the people have to pay for that? Or maybe we should use the stormwater to be able to take that part out. So a lot of moving parts right now. I am excited, Mike, your team, the time we're taking, the consultant's doing a great job. So I know we're moving quickly with it, and I think the timelines you see and the costs you see are going to, you know, all go down. But just give us a little time to keep on working it.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Oakley.
So we had to get our permits, we had to go through DEP to get those permits. I would think we need to go after every grant we can get, and we're going to have matching funds with those grants. So which is the best way to the tax, the MSBU or MSTU? Which is best used?
So staff has recommended that we pursue the MSBU for those specific communities that are being assessed. With an understanding of what that is, we know about what our match could potentially be. And so every grant would be sought to produce that balance.
Okay, all right. Sounds good.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Starky.
So the MSBU is a benefit unit. We'd have to prove that that acreage that we are levying those assessments on benefit from the project. An MSTU is a taxing unit that we could levy an additional millage for municipal purposes, that being dredging. So one's a taxing unit, one's a benefit unit. There are strings with the benefit unit, but the other one is levying additional millage.
So can I ask one more question? So just as a follow-up, I'm going to make an assumption that as time goes on, we'll have community meetings, meetings with the residents to make sure we receive their input, obviously. Okay. Just want to make sure of that because obviously that's very important to make sure that we, that the residents, this is something they want to pursue and want to move forward with. We know we have heard from quite a few that would, but obviously it's, obviously we want to give those folks the opportunity. So Commissioner Mariano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I will tell you, from four years ago plus now, we had that first meeting over at Sea Ranch where we had people all the way from Bailey's Bluff up to Seabines, all the different communities showing interest in this, and they've been, I'll say, excitedly waiting as we may keep on making progress with this coming forward. So I know that when we get to it, everybody knows that they're going to benefit from it, and they seem willing to participate as well. Just looking to make sure we make the best move possible. I would like to add, when we do look at the MSBU, there's an area on Old Dixie Highway where there's a, it's not even a bridge, it's like ten feet wide or so. There was a canal that goes right across from Hudson. Years ago, they lowered it down to now, if you're in a pontoon boat at high tide, you've got to lay down to be able to go into that bridge. There's about two-hundred-and-fifty parcels that are in there. So if we're going to go kind of do something for improvement, dredging, et cetera, I think those canals should be in it as well as a separate unit from where the bridge is going back through it. And I would think that if we come to a plan, we might even for that one unit as well, to look at raising that bridge up. It'll take two-hundred homes that are either just can't get to the Gulf with any type of boat whatsoever other than a pontoon to be able to go out there and boat access. You could take two-hundred-and-fifty units and all of a sudden make them prime Gulf property that can go right into a canal. So if we can add that into this mix, I think it'd be a good addition. I think everybody else west of nineteen, you can show a clear benefit for everybody.
So I have another question, and this could be answered by commissioners or the team. Hudson Channel, so we're looking at the cost of possibly seven million dollars. And we discussed this a little bit more, but that's not just a benefit for the residents that are there, that live there. I mean, that's a benefit for commercial fishermen, that's a benefit to the public in general. So I guess the question is, you know, when it comes to an MSBU and referring to Hudson Channel, I mean, how much should local residents be paying for that portion when there is quite a bit of, you know, quite a bit of benefit for the general public, too, or commercial fishermen that actually don't live on the areas?
That's a great point. So maybe it is something to take a look at. Maybe it's not just quite the same high degree on the west side of nineteen, but everybody will benefit from it. Good point.
Yeah, we can certainly consider the commercial aspects of the dredging and who, other properties that may benefit from that, marinas, fishermen, et cetera.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes. Commissioner, let me just follow that up real quick, and I'm with you. So when we look at opportunities or grant opportunities, is there any type of economic grant or funding that could be tied into this?
I don't know offhand.
That's just an open question, maybe something, not maybe, let's look into that. So Commissioner Starky, go ahead, please.
Well, I just wanted to say, I know most of the citizens I run into in Gulf Harbors are very excited about the dredge. I know there's some boats that can't get out. Actually heard one run into a rock the other day. As far as Hudson Channel, I would say even our boat, we won't go in there anymore. Well, we're very nervous to go in there to get gas, especially at low tide. So not just for commercial fishermen located there, but boats that are traveling up and down the coast. It'll open that up for more economic opportunity from those boats as well.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mariano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, you know, one really interesting thing of all this research we've been doing, and staff, again, doing a great job, finding out that the Hudson Channel was six foot deep, seventy-five foot wide. When we had to dredge back in oh-four, we had to give up, they said, at four-point-seven-five to acceptable number. We still had a whole bunch of rocks that were in there. We can't seem to find that map, but it doesn't matter. Well, we've got it all mapped out now, anyway. I am very optimistic at seventy-foot wide, six feet deep, going across the board. That whole channel is going to change in a big way, that area, between safety, economics as well, that's going to be much, much better.
So six, so I think it needs to be deeper than six feet, though. I mean, some of those larger boats, what do you think they draft? I mean, that's kind of close for some of them.
That's mean low-low.
Yeah, okay.
And if I could, Chairman, and this may be something, and I probably should have thought about it, but I believe the old Hudson Channel is deeper than the new Hudson Channel. We probably ought to have them maybe add to the scope to look at the old Hudson Channel. It's just to the north of where the one is now. A lot of boats use that old channel because it's deeper and it's wider. So I'm just, I didn't really think about it, but there's a lot of the fishermen that come in there by catches, or not catches, but Mike's dockside up there, that use that. So just, it might be something where they could, if they're going to sonar, it wouldn't be that much more. I know the contract's almost up, but just throwing it out there. It might be worth looking at, you know. I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there, you know.
Commissioner Mariano.
Yeah, Captain Wells, if you would, no, I mean, I would like, I mean, you were all, you guys are all very astute as far as voting goes. But if you would, that map that we have of the Army Corps, we got it from the Army Corps, that seventy-five foot deep, we'll make that available to everybody as well to go take a look at. And please, get with staff, go take a look at that, and then go check those markers out and just kind of front out. Because I think you'll kind of find one marker that's like really off-center, we've got to change it. But if you would, take a really close look at that as we go forward with this. Thank you.
Any other questions, any other comments? So now, staff does need some type of direction today to move forward to continue to obviously spend any public funds on this.
So I'll tell you what I've heard, and just to make sure, is that the board is comfortable with us continuing to proceed with next-level design activities and fleshing out the project more, with the understanding that that will, Public Works will borrow those funds from somewhere within its Public Works funding to pay for it, with the understanding that that would be reimbursed whenever we get to the next phase, which right now sounds like an MSBU for those specific benefiting units, to also consider including commercial and those types of activities. In the meantime, we'll continue on parallel paths. I mean, that's generally what I've heard.
Commissioner Mariano.
And with the TIF as well?
I'm sorry, sir, yes, of course.
And I think just for the public that's watching this today, too, again, we're looking at, continue to look at multiple options, multiple funding options with the caveat.
For grants, of course.
We're going to look to get as much funding we can from any type of grant, from state to the federal level.
Mr. Chairman, and the BP Resto Act money as well is a very big source, and not only Part One and Part Three to bring something, get ready for the committee, but I think this is something so broad-based up and down our whole coast for water quality, that the Part Two money, this is ideal project for that. And especially we get the state behind us, which is getting some of their matching monies. We could go to work with that whole council to get a whole bunch more money. You might get the whole thing funded. It could be that good a project.
That would be pretty awesome. Timeline, again, just for the public that's watching, when can we get to the point where there's some type of public meeting or public engagement? What would you like to do and your team like to do or complete before we get to that point?
So I don't think that there's ever really, you can never do community engagement too late in the process or too early, I should say. You know, we would, we could certainly, we're certainly have enough information right now that we could take a pulse. So, you know, an early community meeting over the course of the next few months is certainly doable. And then as we get through the final design phase, I would probably suggest a second community meeting there. And we can have a little more fleshed out in terms of costs. We'll know more about grants, and we can have those discussions so folks will really understand how it will affect them economically, both in terms of valuation of their properties as well as what they're going to end up paying in future taxes.
So maybe working with your coastal commissioners to, together with them, to get through that process.
And I think, you know, maybe the West Pasco Board of Realtors might be a good place centrally located for everybody to go to. We could do it here to a degree, but I think there's more room there to space people out. I think the first one we had four years ago, we probably had about sixty or seventy people there. I would expect at least that many to show up again. And even if we had to do two phases with the meeting,
You might need to do two phases.
I'm happy to do that. So as soon as you think you can put an agenda item together back, we can schedule it. And we don't need that much notice, I don't think, to let people know. We can do a couple of them if need be, but at least like, here's the initial one that we have coming up to update you where we're at. And whenever you think you're going to make that arrangement, I'm happy to be there and make that fit my schedule, too.
Look at your capacity, make sure you follow the guidelines of the fifty-under, spread them out, and then maybe, as I said, do two phases, three phases, reservations, reservations, and whoever get in the first gives them the second time.
Very good.
Cool, sounds like you got direction. Anything else, Mr. Biles, on this item?
Not on that item.
Okay. Okay, great. So that does it for our regular agenda, and we're going to move on to miscellaneous. And I will start with Commissioner Oakley.
Okay. I guess I got a question for the other commissioners. It seems like in my district, I have some issues come up about our landscape ordinance. And the fact of it is, when you take a small business and going through COVID and everything that they're doing, they're trying to, this particular one business trying to fix an outside area for people to be able to wait because it's a very small restaurant. And with that addition and putting a new roof on it, I guess it's triggered, and maybe Mr. Chairman could answer this, it's triggered that they have to upgrade all their landscaping. And for a small business like I'm talking about, it seems like the cost of upgrading their landscape is just very, very expensive and makes it prohibitive from them to be able to, you know, clean up their business and to help themselves. Has any of the other members found out that the landscape ordinance has affected some of these businesses? And it's too extreme? I think it's right for some businesses, but your old mom and pop and those type businesses, a lot of times those lots are very small, and there's hardly room for that type of landscape. So I'm not saying they don't do anything, but it just seems like an overabundance of landscape.
Commissioner Oakley?
Commissioner, hold on one second, I got two hands up here, so I'm sorry. Sally wanted to go ahead and have Commissioner Mariano, then I'll be able to get to you, give me one second. You see your way? Okay, I'll go to Commissioner Mariano, then Commissioner Starky, and then we'll go to Sally.
I was going to say, I agree with Commissioner Oakley as far as that is causing a problem. Up and down nineteen, small lots trying to retrofit something. I think it's really hurt redevelopment up along nineteen. You know, I think if we try to work with them more, like maybe we take those, you know, tree mitigation funds money we have and give them an incentive to go do it, not make them change the park and not make them do everything but help them improve the property, I think it would be a much better approach to go. So maybe we could tweak it. We want to make everything look good, a hundred percent for it, but do we want to cause a burden to really affect that business? Should it really be tied to a roof? I'd say no.
Commissioner Starky.
You know, I like Commissioner Mariano's idea of maybe helping them more, but we don't, you know, we don't know the facts here. I want to make sure, first of all, that they know that right off the bat, there's ten thousand dollars that we can help them with their landscaping, Commissioner Oakley. But let's look and see if there's some way that we can even offer more because we don't want it to be a distance, kind of a not let these businesses expand, but we also don't want to keep them in the style that we had back in the seventies and prior to that where you could put your building, pave the whole parking lot, and put in their landscaping. That doesn't help the county either. So I think we should find a way that we can help these guys.
Yeah, this, thank you for that, but it's not the fact of not doing any. It's the fact that it seems to be an overabundance of landscape where you've got such a small lot, there's basically almost no room for it. So, and I think Ms. Sherman is working with this group that I'm talking about now, and she's, you're going to be sitting back down with them, I think, aren't you, Ms. Sherman?
Unfortunately, Commissioner, I was just, I just received an email that they.
Unfortunately, Commissioner, I was just, I just received an email that they canceled the meeting that we had set up, because I'm sure, if given, if given the opportunity, we would have been able to assist them in some way, but unfortunately, they removed themselves from the process.
Okay. All right, I'll reach out to them and suggest that we have that meeting. They're, maybe they're thinking that it's not going to change anything from the first pre-app meeting they had, and so I'll reach out to them and then give you a call about it, so.
I'll forward their email to you.
Okay.
Mr. Miles?
Yes, sir. As we were talking about the, you know, landscaping reimbursement out of the tree fund, it's capped at $10,000. We could look at increasing the cap. I think that cap's been there for a while, so inflation happens to landscaping like everything else. That's one thing we could go back and look at, and I think there is in excess of a million dollars in that fund, and so we could look at maybe bumping that cap up to cover some more of these costs, if you will.
Yeah.
We'll take that back, and we'll go look at that.
You know, when you take in consideration a mom-and-pop restaurant, if that landscaping is going to cost them $40,000 or $50,000, they're forever trying to earn that money just to stay open. And so many of them are having a hard time now, so we probably need to look at that. But I will reach out to them and talk to them some more, because they probably have felt like it would not expand, or not have this area out. They have no place for people to wait. It's a small business. They have no place for people. If the restaurants got full capacity, then they can't, there's no place to wait. So that's part of why they were going to do this, like a porch or something out in front of it, so people have a place to sit down and wait to have breakfast, or lunch, whatever it might be. But I'll reach back out to them. They're in Dayton City, so.
Commissioner Wells, have a comment?
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Oakley, I can think of two projects in my district alone. Over the last two years, we made exceptions and matched with the tree mitigation fund that was over $10,000. The board was okay with it. It makes sense, you know. And I know, I can remember Commissioner Mariano bringing this up in the past, about what triggers it, as far as the 50% rule. I disagree with that. I think if you're not adding to the square footage, you know, it shouldn't necessarily trigger it, and that's one of the reasons we match these folks with the funding. I know we've got the fund. I like the idea of maybe adding to it, or, you know, we probably need to look at that, but I agree with you. It's tough for these businesses, and not only now, but over the last several years. And we need to do everything we can to help them expand, move, you know, hire more people and so forth. And I'm familiar with what you're talking about. I was actually out there yesterday, so. And we did have to wait, and it would be nice of them to have something. It's a great local business that's been there for a long time, and, you know, so we definitely need to support them, so.
Commissioner Mariano had a follow-up.
Seems like some, these businesses right now, some of them are closing down. They just can't make it, so. It's a shame, so.
Commissioner Mariano?
No, I'm glad you brought up Commissioner Oakley, and I like the idea, Mr. Miles, about increasing the number. I think it's great, as we're talking this through. I think one thing we should take a look at, just as you mentioned, Commissioner Oakley, about they're not making it. Right now, I think we're set up as a reimbursement fund. It might be something where we can set it up where, have the work done, prove it's been done, and get a check, and maybe they can work out a terms with their person who's doing the work for them to be able to have, get reimbursed thereafter, rather than having the business have to pay the money upfront and then get the money back. A lot of them probably can't float that. So we can work that situation where we're going to allot the money once the work's been done, and they can then pay their people after they get reimbursed from the county. And I think most landscaping companies will probably be comfortable to work that way.
Yeah.
So we just got to be flexible.
So we have time today, so I think this might be a good time. Mr. Miles, or Ms. Sherman, one of you, explain, just in case the public is watching, what's the criteria for this tree mitigation fund to apply? And if we have, and I guess the other question would be, if we have approximately a million dollars in that account now, how much was spent last year? And when was the last time somebody actually applied for funding?
I think you do, we, y'all approved a reimbursement not too long ago. I don't remember what meeting was on, but it was one not too long ago. But I don't know off the top of my head the process they go through to get it approved. I think some of these questions, though, we're going to have to go do research and bring back to you answers.
I think that'd be good.
Sounds like it makes sense to look at increasing the cap. Sounds like there's, we need to think about, how do we make streamline the process to get to approval quicker, and some other things, so.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, bringing that back next meeting, that'd be great.
Yeah, if we could have those questions answered, then, you know, we can have maybe a discussion on criteria. It might be good to have just a quick little rundown, again, for the public's best interest. All right, anything else, sir?
One other thing, I had heard that there was some new fees, and I think Mr. Cabala and I talked about it a little bit, but there was a new fee that affected electric companies based on changing out poles and right-ofways, and it was like, I think, like $300 a pole. From my understanding, it never had been charged before, but then all of a sudden it shows up, and any fee that is charged to any company in our county, I think, because I don't know that we had an open discussion about it at the board with all our members. I don't know how this came about, but I think anything we're going to charge that charges a business or a citizen in this county, that this board ought to be looking at it, and, you know, really researching it, and be sure it's the right thing for our county, not just a fee show up one day and we're not really aware of it. So, Mike, you want to answer something to that effect?
Yes, sir. So the fee that is being referred to is a right-of-way inspection fee. Yes, that was not normally charged to a lot of places. In fact, as part of our revamping some of our departments and trying to get them to be more self-sufficient, we resorted to, you know, along with Development Services, we came up with a new fee structure. And that is just to reimburse our costs for doing right-of-way inspections. And so, what we have done, however, is because there are a number of issues right now with communications providers as well, we've gone and suspended those fees in the interim, while we take a look at how do we perhaps better streamline the right-of-way use process for utility providers such as electric and gas. So that is something that we are working on. That fee has been suspended, and we will certainly partner with them and work with them along the way as we come up with a better process.
Do we do any inspection or anything for these fees? I mean, charged?
So I have not seen the report. I have asked to see how we arrived at the $300 fee, and what those actual inspections entail. I don't have an answer for you, but it is a question that I have asked.
But this one has come about because of the change of, I guess, engineering. It used to be under Building Department, now is under the Utility Department. Is that it, or?
Well, no, this is Engineering Services, and they're inspections group. And so, we were looking to better align our costs with those who receive the benefit of those costs. And that was what was developed and came up with. Again, I don't have the exact numbers, how many hours or full-time equivalents it takes to go out and perform one of those inspections, and under what circumstances those inspections are, but those are things that we are looking into. In fact, we're looking at revamping the process, instead of making perhaps individual permit applications. Perhaps we can move to an annual-type system, something that would streamline it and make it easier for those providers.
Right. Well, the issue is, I mean, the different electric companies, I'm sure they're out, if they're doing their job, they're out replacing poles a lot in certain areas, making their poles and all ready for the bad weather and everything that might be coming in the future. So if they let it go and it gets terrible, they don't get refunded by FEMA or anybody else, if they don't keep those up to the regular standards, what they need to be for the storms and all. So, but is that new fees that were not charged in Engineering Services prior to them coming over to Utilities?
It is my understanding that a fee was not charged previously, correct.
There was no fee charged.
Okay. Well, shouldn't that come before this board, that we discuss and decide?
Can I jump in real quick? So, the question is, and, you know, Commissioner Oakley just brought it up, too. So what is the, you know, how much time is an FTE obviously spending on this process? Are they actually, I know the answer's no, but I mean, as in, they're not going out inspecting the actual pole afterwards installed, from my, correct?
They are not expecting the technical work. They are looking at the right-of-way to ensure that the right-of-way still meets our standards and is safe.
So does that mean they are driving out to the site to look at that right-of-way for every, I'm going to use the word pole, structure, how about we use structure, that is placed by utility company? And we say utility company, you're talking, you're saying electric, you know, let's say power companies, as well as cable, FiOS for telephone company, whatever it may be, utilities in general, the big bag?
Right. I want to confirm that, and what exactly has gone into that $300 fee. And again, that will go into this more comprehensive, there's a better way to do business, I think, with utility providers, which are in our right-of-way, and we all have to exist there. And so we want to make sure that we can balance keeping the public safe and being efficient, so that way they can provide their vital services as well.
The last thing, last comment I'll make, too, we don't want to be a deterrent, as Commissioner Oakley just stated, if they're coming in and making replacements. If we deter them from making replacements, that could not be, might not be in the best interest of our citizens in the community if that were to obviously happen. So if it's a deterrent for somebody to go make a replacement down the road, it's a life safety issue, possibly, right? Something to think about. Commissioner Wells?
Yeah, and Mike, I know we've discussed this, and, you know, I know that cable companies are exempt, which doesn't make sense, because they're the ones using contractors, they're the ones ripping up our lines. They're the ones we're spending a lot of time out there with, and I know we do not inspect the electric companies now. My issue is, even as early as last week, we still charged, we're going to charge the fee until I called you, and then you took care of it. So I don't know if we need to make a motion today to make the fee disappear until you relook at it, but that's my issue. We're still not all on the same page with all staff. Like I said, literally as early as last week, I had to deal with us saying, oh, there's a fee, and then with La Cucchi called me, and then Tico called me on something a couple of weeks ago. So I just, I know it came before us. I take responsibility for that. But once again, kind of like earlier with the transportation thing, it was kind of jumbled, then with some other things, that, again, this should have, the stakeholders should have been involved with this. They're being great partners, all of them. They are great partners, and we want to include them going forward with whatever we think's best for, obviously, you know, to pay for our expense, whatever expense there is. So that's only my concern with you suspending it, is, so I don't, it's up to the board, but I don't know if you all here, and I know that I have, as early as last week, so just want to throw that out there.
If we suspend it, what's, is it just going to automatically show up one day as a fee to somebody, and we not be able to discuss it, or go forward, or should we have a motion that holds it suspended until we hear back from y'all on the answers? So we make sure it's the right thing to be doing.
So it's on your fee schedule today, you know, and we, because of the communication services issue and the preemption, where we can't charge them, and other things, you know, we, Mike suspended it, you know, obviously, the board can do what the board desires. I would say that there are inspections that we do. If the company that requires the inspection isn't going to pay for that, then ultimately, it's the general fund that has to cover that cost. So, and that's kind of what's happening today with the communication service companies, is the general fund is covering the cost of us going out there to make sure that those companies aren't damaging our right-of-way, i.e. our pavement, our structures, our things. So, you know, we can continue with it suspended while we go through this process. I actually ultimately think we go to an annual permit process, where there's an annual permit to include the permit, because they still pay the permit fee. They submit the right-of-way permit, they still pay the permit fee for that. But we go to an annual process, so they don't have to come in every single time they do something, they just notice us. I think that already happens in Pinellas. I think Hillsborough already has something similar to that. I think that's probably where we need to be, but it's going to take us a little time to get there.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Mariano.
We'll suspend it till we get, I guess, find out some history or something, and bring it back to us when we discuss it.
I've already suspended it, but if the board would like to reaffirm that, it's your purview.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
You know, one thing with any time a utility is being charged a fee, it's going to get passed on to the customer. Now, with La Cucchi, probably doesn't mark it up, but I'm sure Duke does. I think it's something, you know, to think, anyone in the county's paying these fees, no matter what it is, it's just how it gets to them. So the more we can take it out, the quicker, the better. You guys want to bring us back something, I'm okay to wait on it. We can say we're going to permanently end this anyway, and you can bring back something, another alternative to us, that's fine. So I'm comfortable if we want to make a motion for that now, that's good, and we'll make them bring something back to us when they've got a resolution, whether it be the annual fee, or whatever it may be.
As part of those, I'm talking about one thing, about change of poles, but are there those fees that haven't been charged that's going to be also in that group?
So to be, any inspection that's required of those groups within the right-of-way, so if they're changing out the poles, if they're setting a new service, or whatever work that they might do, that's where that inspection fee. And that's why I want to go ahead and do a comprehensive review of what probably needs to be inspected more frequently than others, and again, you know, looking at an annual subscription.
Just to assure that it comes back before us when you're ready, when you've done that research and bring it back. I'd like to make a motion that we suspend it until that time, and then we'll look at it, and it'd be noticed, so everybody's on board to understand what the fee's for, and they're, I mean, if it's a new fee, then we really need to know that, too. So I'd make that motion now.
Second? I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion, Mr. Miles?
Well, my concern is that, you know, it's not just our utility companies that get right-of-way permits and pay an inspection fee. Developers do that, other people get right-of-way permits, and that inspection fee, I think, applies there as well. So can we at least separate out that this is really for the maintenance of existing facilities, and not necessarily for the, and those types of permits versus new construction and new development? At least then, we don't have, you know, we do have, you know, the board kind of has a policy, development needs to pay for development, you know, which, again...
Well, I understand that. I'm not talking about a new development coming in, and you have fees you charge. I'm not talking about those. I'm talking about the ones that are going to affect, I guess, when a
Utility providers?
Utility goes out and puts a new line, and has changed out 25 or 30 poles at one time, you know, that type thing. So that's not a new development, it's keeping their lines up to the standard. So that's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
That okay?
Okay. So I have a motion in a second on that. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Sorry, it was a motion by Commissioner Oakley, and a second by Commissioner Mariano.
Thank you. District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Wells.
Aye.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District Two, Chairman Moore.
Aye, motion passes. Five, zero.
Only thing left to have is the discussion on the mask was very good. I told you earlier that from my emails I've gotten from the citizens, probably 80, 85% of them were very positive in wanting us to keep that mask order in place, and, you know, at this time. But, and we had a little uptick in those numbers, so I want to make sure, you know, that's a good thing to keep in place at this time, and we look at it next month and see what it is, but no sense in taking that away too early. And I definitely, we're, we are here to keep our public as safe as possible, and we've done, thanks to Mr. Miles and his staff, and everyone involved. Pasco County's been very safe during this whole time, so. Done a great job. So that's all.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Wells? Mr. Starkey, or, oh, no, oh, sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I just, all I did was look to my left. Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Starkey.
Yeah, really, just one thing. Hey, and great discussion on the dredging, and frankly, great discussion on the landscaping. If we can help our citizens more, that's a win-win for all of us. And I was kind of surprised to hear how much money we have in that mitigation, that tree mitigation fund. So let's get it back out so let's get it back out on the street and, you know, helping our businesses look better. I wanted to bring up a subject that's been, you know, kind of a sore subject for me in the past, and that is, again, our outside lobbyists, and I did talk to the administrator about it, but frankly, I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot by not having, having our outside lobbyists. I've talked to commissioners in other counties, and we might, we might be the only county this size that, I think we would be the only county this size that, that doesn't have at least one outside lobbyist. The other ones have multiple firms, so I want to say, especially at a time when money's gonna be even tighter in Tallahassee, that we need to be looking out for the best interests of our citizens, and having someone on retainer for, say, $40,000 or so is gonna bring back dividends to the county. You saw what happened to us in this last year, and I've looked at what other counties got to keep, and I think we can do a little better, and I think Ralph does a great job, but there is a difference between an internal lobbyist and an external lobbyist, and we are better served if we have both.
Commissioner Mariano?
Yeah, I will, I will concur with that. You know what, when I look at how much money we had out there that was gonna be set, and this current year with Speaker Sprouls and President Simpson, we are in position to do something, but when we don't have our lobbyist who's tied in with these guys, and Sean Foster, I think, at Sunrise was our last one, I think we should bring him back on, what the job they could do for us, if he only gets one thing for us, we're way out of the game. You've got to, you've got to be up there, you've got to be in their face, you've got to be pushing to get these things through, so. Commissioner Starkey, thank you for bringing it up, I think you're right on the money.
Commissioner Wells?
Yes, I, I also agree with Commissioner Starkey, and again, Ralph does an unbelievable job. Again, we're lucky to have him up there, but I know, for instance, you know, the school board has their internal person and an external person, they work together as great as a team, and in the past, Sean's worked great with us as a team, so I, I agree with you both on that, so. I'm glad you brought it up, Commissioner, thank you.
Do we know how many people Hillsborough has Commissioner Starkey now, do you know?
They have, I, I know they have Washington and local firms, I don't know how many they have local, but more than one. And I will tell you that both Hillsborough and Pinellas, and Pinellas had the one that we let go, Van Scowick up in Washington, they both got build grants this year. I don't know if you saw that, but they got tens of billions of dollars from, from Washington this year, so. But anyway, I, I would like to put it in motion form that we bring back our lobbyists and see if there's a second.
Second with discussion, Chairman?
Go ahead, Commissioner Wells.
Commissioner Starkey, I agree with you on both aspects, I think, especially with looking at this dredging that Commissioner Mariano's been working on for the last couple of years. Does your motion include doing a federal lobbyist as well as state?
I would love that if there was support, we are really missing out, and now we really have a, another project, you know, we never would've got our Ridge Road permit without our help, without that help, and I, I agree that we should have a federal lobbyist help us with this whole coastal effort, absolutely.
Well, I, I mean, if that's.
Can I, can I jump in real quick too? Let's talk about the federal one, though, real quick, on the federal side. I mean, so I'm, I'm gonna ask on the federal side, what was our, what we say our return on investment with the federal lobbyists we previously had? How, how many bills were passed on our behalf? How much funding did we receive from the group we had previously hired on as federal lobbyists? Can anybody answer that? I know the answer, but I'm just asking.
We have to be smart about what we ask for, and we haven't used our lobbyist right, because we haven't put, had a project besides our Ridge Road one that we went up there and asked them for. Although I did ask for help in changing some of the labor laws, and we did get that, so. So, that, that not, not necessarily is a straight county, county project, but even Martin County, the little Martin County over on the other side, they have two lobbying firms in, in Washington, and they bring back millions and millions of dollars, so we, we have to be more savvy about what we're asking for. I think that the transportation money, I think there's possibly the dredge money, I think, I think we should look at what other counties have done and mimic that, and, and not always pay things for ourselves. I know that I, I told the administrator, I ran into Secretary Anod somewhere in Tallahassee last year, and you guys remember him, he was the head of DOT?
Yes.
Florida DOT, Secretary Anod?
Yes.
He told me he was shocked that we were paying for the overpass extension all by ourselves, and that that was a, definitely a project that could've got some money in Washington if we had asked for it.
So why didn't we, so when, yeah, I mean, so, this is my question on the federal side. So we had those folks for two years, if I wasn't correct, and there were certain things that we had discussed about Tiger Grants and whatever it may be, in addition, and we piled on top of that, well, we didn't get anything. So I'm not saying a federal lobbyist itself is not a good idea, but we did not get any return on our investment with the group that we had, and I'm not knocking them, so, I mean, do we, do we, so do we need to, for on, on the federal side, if you're saying, okay, do we move forward again with a federal lobbyist? I'm not saying we, we do or don't, but I'm saying is, do we go look at who else is out there in addition to who we previously had?
So, so here's the deal, like, the, the build grant that Pinellas just got, it took a number of years of lobbying, and you know, we can, you can ask any one of the, you know, we're all friends with the developers commissioners, I can tell you Janet Long went up to Washington three to four times, was, was, and went around with her lobbyist and some people from the business community, they worked that grant. And it took them quite a few years to get it, and I wouldn't doubt that Hillsborough County would tell us the same thing, so. So we, we have to have a plan, we have to have an ask, and then we have to go work it. And you can't expect it in a year or two, but you have to build those relationships, and I think that's what those kinda guy, those guys can do for you, and gals.
Okay, Commissioner Mariano?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, you know, when you, when you look at Van Scowick, I think they're a great company. I think it does take time, you, you just can't get it in a year or two, it's gonna take, you know, even, even a regular road project takes five years to our own MPO process, so it takes time to get it for that. But if you look at federal lobbyists, Dawson's a federal lobbyist, they stuck with us in Ridge Road.
Right.
When we signed up with them, it was a time, don't expect it right away, it's gonna take time, and there were time, we made decisions year after year. Are we gonna keep doing this, are we gonna keep doing this?
Right.
And because we persevered and stuck with it, we got it through. So, you know, it does take time to go through it, so, you know, don't go just by what we did for the short term and dropped it, because, you know, it's tough. I will tell you.
But I don't, I'm not trying to interrupt, I'm gonna continue on the conversation, but I guess, I'm just asking these questions out loud because I wanna know what was brought to them, what suggestions were made to them by our team and staff of what to go after, and what happened to it, because I just didn't see any.
I'll say this, you know, and, you know, Commissioner Wells, I'm so glad you just brought up the federal side, especially mentioned dredging as well, because right now, we're gonna be going through the biggest dredging project we ever had in the county. So we're gonna be looking, doing all this thing, and I'm telling you that pot two money with restore is just untouched from us, and it takes big projects to get it done, it's gotta be tied to water quality and economic development. We're right in the mix of that whole thing. I think we could look at them, but we can also look at others, and, and let's go look at who's gonna be, help us best with transportation, best with the restoration, I'll call it, up and down the coast. But I think there's an opportunity that's out there that could be absolutely huge for money, that we should go take a look at. We're, we're too big, we're too premier accounting not to go after that.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Oakley?
I'm not sure that I ever heard us even ask for anything for overpass road when they were, did we ask, Mr. Biles?
Yes, sir, yeah, I think we submitted at least one Tiger application. We didn't submit a build grant application this time, because we did not have any projects ready in the window.
Right.
For that, so.
But we gave that to the federal lobbyists?
Yeah, well, and our federal lobbyist contract ran out at the end of last year?
I believe.
Not sure if it was a fiscal year or the calendar year, but ran out last year, so.
I just don't remember us talking about, asking about overpass or for funds for overpass, but I definitely know we were pushing very hard for Ridge Road.
And I will say that our engineering services team does a very good job getting money out of the state. I think right now, we have about 85 million, I think is the number I saw, money out of the state going towards current Pasco County projects, so, I mean, they're working it pretty hard, so, through, through the process, through the F.D.O. process, so. So there is that out there, I will say that, if, you know, if the board, neither, there's not funding for either one in the budget that's on the agenda for approval this afternoon. If the board wants to do that, then we will obviously amend the budget at the next available meeting when we can to add funding into the budget to do that, and then we will go through the solicitation process for both contracts.
Well, that was my next question, where are we gonna get the money from?
Well, I, I don't know, this, this, this discussion's new to me.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
So we all have to get back with O M B to see where the money's coming from, but.
I agree.
Commissioner Mariano?
Yeah, I mean, we, we've done a great job putting our reserves back in as well. If I gotta go pull from reserves to go make this happen, I think it's well worth doing.
I think, well, I don't think we need to do that, I think we do have, there were, there were some funds that we, were returned, and we have not made any, there was a small ask on it, but I know there are some left over. Now, that would be reoccurring, that would be obviously covered for the year, but.
I'm just saying, we can get this done.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you wanna, you don't have to dip into reserves, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing, the direction the board would like us to, to amend the budget, to find both the state and federal lobbyists, and we will go through the solicitation process for both and bring those contracts back to the board when they're ready to.
So I don't, I don't know if that was Commissioner Starkey's motion.
Yes, yes, and I would say the local, you know, is as soon as possible, because committee meetings are gonna be starting soon.
Commissioner Mariano?
They start in December, so especially the local one, we need to get that done by December, one way or the other.
I'm looking to the right, but there's nobody there anymore.
So, Chairman, just so I can make clear, Commissioner Starkey, so you're okay with us putting it out to bid and then taking the most qualified? You don't wanna use who we, who we had picked in the past to do the local state stuff?
Mr. Chairman, you can't just go with Mr. Foster, it has to go out.
Okay, sounds good to me, I second it, so.
Okay, but I, I would not like this to get in purchasing or whatever and be stuck there for six months. This is time is of the essence, because it doesn't do us any good to bring one on six months after they've already started. So, how, since we've done this in the past, you already have a, you know, you already have the language to get a bid out on the street. Can we just haul it off the one we had before and get it out on the street this week?
Commissioner, I don't know, I, I mean, I didn't know this item was gonna come up for discussion today, otherwise I'd have done a little research, so. Once the meeting ends, I'll go with purchasing and our team to see what we can do.
Commissioner Mariano?
Aye.
If you could, please take a look at both contracts, the last contracts we had, and if we can find a way to extend them.
They're expired, Commissioner.
Both expired, okay.
Okay, I would assume, because that way you don't have to go through the process and wait on it, yeah, wait for six months.
They're, they're long behind, beyond being able to resuscitate.
Okay, thanks, I think we have to call the vote, is that a vote, or?
Yeah, you have a motion, you have a motion by Commissioner Starkey, I have a second by Commissioner Wells. I was gonna wait for, we had one step out for a moment, but I think we'll be okay. Can you, can you give me one second, I wanna just see if he's coming down the hall? If you don't mind, give us one sec to check.
I'm trying to think if I have anything else.
Well, he's on his way back, and I'll call it. Give me one second, Commissioner.
I would wanna remind everybody about the two, the two souls. Bring, let's, let's keep collecting shoes and socks for our students. It's a great project that, that we have going on, so we need shoes, we need socks.
Okay, great, so I can call that vote, and I have a motion by Commissioner Starkey, a second by Commissioner Wells. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Wells.
Aye.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District Two, Chairman Moore.
I have a motion passes, five zero. Okay, are we, you good, you good, Commissioner?
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, ma'am, all right, now I will go to Commissioner Wells.
Thank you, Chairman, I just have one thing, Sally, if you don't mind, and Jack has part of this, this community in his district, and I have part of it in my district, it's Golden Acres community, you probably don't know where that is yet, you might. It's just right, literally, right next door, down Little Road, so it's weird, it's an agriculture community. Half of the community is zoned AR, half the community is zoned ER. The issue that we're having with code is, in ER and AR, you're allowed the same agriculture uses, horses, chickens, all those things, but in ER, you're not allowed, like, electric fence, for instance, to keep your livestock and cows, which you need to keep them in, you're, they're, you're constricted by heights on fences, and it's just very confusing. I don't understand why, you know, everything is an acre or more out there, I don't understand why half's AR, why half's ER, but I really would like to see us look at making, I guess, first of all, find out maybe why it was split, and then if we could look at changing it all to AR, because I, I don't know why it would be a state residential in some of Golden Acres. It, it's weird, so I, I, the only reason it came up is because code had, got called on, somebody went out there, and I'm like, hang on. They're allowed to have these cows or these horses, but they're not allowed to have this fence because it's ER, but the guy across the street's AR, so I just, I, I don't understand why, so if you don't, if you don't mind, and maybe bring it back, please, if you could. So thank you very much.
Is that it?
That's it, yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Tough to draw that line.
Commissioner Mariano?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I wanna say that had a great cleanup for Hudson, for the coast. Hudson, I was, that's where I was at in the morning, did a great job, a lot of citizens got involved, everyone had masks on, protection on. Very, very pleased the way it went. I did mention to the board, we did have a meeting with Nye, Florida, about what's going on, and to assure the people in Hudson. One of the things that was talked about is septic systems, did everybody get hooked up? I think other than four or five in the whole area, everybody was hooked up, so I don't think that's causing a, a problem out there. We're gonna keep on working with DEP to get to deeper things, but the new pipes that are in that area are, you know, in good shape, so. Wasn't some of the thoughts we thought, but we did investigate it. I wanna say, Mr. Carballo, I, I wanna praise you guys again for getting Agenda Item C60 on the line on for us today. It's the street sweeping, part of our basin management plan is to actually do that, especially on the coast, so that's gonna help us talk to DEP a little bit stronger about here's what we're doing to, to do what we're supposed to do. And Mike, I wanna thank you again for your team, they did a great job out Scallop Drive, they're getting that pipe in place so that gets replaced. That's collapsed all around it, so it's gonna help out dramatically, and the, the second set of pipes, and working on Tower Drive as well. People are very, very happy, so you got a tremendous team out there that really has got great talent, so. We're gonna make sure we keep them happy every step of the way, because they're doing, doing a great job, and that's all I got.
That's it, okay, Mr. Biles?
Well, actually, one more thing, sorry.
Go ahead.
I, I touched it on it earlier. I was with, stopped by a place called Point Distillery the other day to, to visit with them, and he said he wanted to talk to me, so I went in and had the talk with him, and when COVID hit, we were all looking for people to kinda go out, and a lot of breweries brilliantly strapped up, and they started making the hand sanitizer. And these guys were no different, and the vats that they have are like phenomenal, so they went out there and they invested heavily. They went out and bought thousands and thousands, they ended up giving many, much of it away, sold the rest of it at cost. Currently, this sitting on 20, I believe it's 1,000 cases of material, taken up about a third, think of this, a third of this storage space. All big cardboard boxes loaded up, they says, Jack, we made this stuff, we made it with the best ingredients possible, it's 80%, which is great for sanitizer, it's not like 60% that doesn't work for you, it's 80%, it's the best material. He says, I really would like to see if there's any way we can try to find a way to sell this, promote this, and get it out there. I says, well, as far as I know, we're working on so many things with CARE, spending money on trying to protect our community. Everybody, I believe, agrees, keeping your hands clean is the number one thing. If we're gonna keep on, especially with this ordinance, a little bit further, I think we should reach out to these folks that have done so much for the community, put themselves at risk, and, again, a small business in a sense, that's really been hampered by doing the good work they did to protect our citizens. I think we should go look at the CARE's money, and. I think we should go look at the CARES money, and I know, Mr. Biles, we talked about it just briefly, but I got word that maybe we were only gonna buy fifteen to twenty cases from them, so I want to have the discussion about buying all that they've got and finding a way to get it to the community to protect our people out there. So, if you would, let's talk this."
Do we, from my understanding before, that we had a pretty good stockpile, I thought. Did we not? Already? Doesn't Foster have a pretty good...
This information was sent to Emergency Management, and they were working on what they needed, and we're gonna work with the, with Point Distillery about what they need to buy, and then try to work through the purchasing process to buy.
Last I talked, I thought we had a lot. That's because I was trying to get it out to some businesses, too, so...
Yeah, we have a, I think we have a decent amount of supply. That doesn't mean we don't need, nor, I don't know if we need twenty thousand cases.
Wonder what we had.
So, I asked Andy, my expert on that, in our supplies, our P P E, to get with Point Distillery and work through our purchasing process to figure out what we needed and buy what we needed to buy to have it in our supplies.
I just want to make, and I appreciate, I just want to make sure we're not buying what we don't need or spending dollars on a product that we don't have a need for. If we need it, we need it. If we don't, we don't.
That's why I got Emergency Management involved, because they're the ones that know how much we have and need right now.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Part, and again, I'm, I was, I went through that process, and only just a few minutes before did I get the word that we're gonna buy fifteen to twenty cases, all right, which, if you look at every single school, look at every single business that's trying to protect everybody around here, I've got a company that actually spent their money, put this thing out there to go protect people, and now they're stuck with a stockpile. At the same time, we're saying, this COVID is so severe, we're gonna keep this mask mandate still in place for another couple of weeks as we look it forward. Every single school, if you could probably put enough in there, you could probably fill every school up with one for every classroom, it still might not even be enough. You could take every restaurant that's already struggling and suffering, that has to try to protect their employees and their people that are out there that put them in there. We can go buy it all, and we can go give it away to our citizens, our businesses that are here, our schools that are here.
We do that now.
And that's what I say, so let's, I don't want to wait, I didn't want to wait two weeks to come back in this conversation. I want to go, have us to go find a way to go buy all of it, and then let's go find a way to get it out there. And I think schools alone, I had someone reach out to me when I floated this out on Facebook, they says, "Well, don't forget the schools." Businesses says, "Well, don't forget us." So, between both of it, I'm gonna tell you, it's only seventy thousand dollars. When we got all these millions of dollars are out there, I think we should go do it, do it now, get the word out there, and let people go start protecting themselves, especially in the situation we're in right now.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wilson?
No, it was...
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was your lawyer, it was your lawyer who had to respond to that last comment. So, there are lots of, while I understand what the Commissioner is raising with the Point Distillery, there are lots of distilleries that find themselves in the same position, and you are still constrained by the laws of the state of Florida on competitive bidding. This is not something you can say is not avai, I mean, when, when nothing was available, we could waive procurement to get there. But now that there are others that are available, I'm not so sure that you can just say, we're gonna buy, we're gonna buy this particular vendor out of the problem that they're in. You may be able to, but I don't know that it's as cut and dry as just buying all his inventory, because there are others that are in the same position.
Well, and again, let's go look at it. Again, for them to say they're gonna be, if you're gonna tell me you can buy fifteen to twenty, but you can't buy seventy, what's the difference? I mean, if you can do it one step, you can do it the next step. All I want them to do is to go find out, and if there are, if there are, if we have other people in Pasco County that went and built this stuff and built a good product as well that's out there, and they're sitting on it as well, and I've gotta have my own people go out and buy it, and I've got CARES money that's supposed to go help me to go protect my community, then I would like staff to go out, find a way, if there's a way possible, at least make the attempt to go find a way to get it out there, find out what's out there, and get it to, whether it be schools or businesses, but get it out there in the community so people can protect themselves more.
Mr. Biles?
So, we are, I mean, we are providing P P E. to people who ask. I will say that it appears that the state is supplying the schools with the P P E. that they need with, and to include hand sanitizer and those kinds of things, and so the other thing we can do is have R E M. send the contact information up to the state, and so maybe they can do a direct procurement as well, so that may be another way to solve that. So, we know what we need. We will continue to buy to keep our stock supply, going through the process as County Attorney outlined, and so that's, that's kind of what our plan is, and I don't know what that final number is, and we are always gonna be continuing to buy them as we need it, but you don't want to build up too much of a stockpile either.
Let me ask you this. Is this considered P P E.?
I don't know if we included hand sanitizer in the list of things we reimbursed. I think we did, but I don't know off the top of my head.
If it's considered P P E., and if someone comes to you and asks for you for it, you're gonna give that to them?
So, the small businesses, we had a P P E. grant process where they were submitting applications, and that is still available, where they can submit an application, and we can reimburse them for what they have bought. That's still available.
Do you remember the theory of that, what that was?
The what?
The theory of why we did it that way? Let me tell you, let me tell you what Mr. Cronin told me. The reason we're gonna go do it that way, instead of people just going out and, going a different way, just supplying and give it to them, because we wanted the businesses to be able to make money as they were gonna go get it. So, what I'm telling you is, we've got a situation where a business that actually went out and got it, built it because we needed it, we said we needed it, is now stuck with it. So, for the same theory, that we're trying to help the businesses out by making people go out and buy that, so it helps the economy, I'm telling you, we got a local business right here that went out and did the right thing to try to protect people, and they got seventy thousand, seventy thousand dollars' worth of product that's out there, that they can use it. And I will tell you, I will load my truck up, up and down, and go up and down every single road, every single restaurant, and I guarantee you, if I offer it to the people that are out there protecting people with hand sanitizer, they'll take it and they'll use it. I'll even be, do the distribution. That's how many people I think will want this thing.
Yeah, I guess, I may disagree, and I think it just, we want to find out how much we have now.
I don't know the total number of what we have in our stock.
I think that's what we need to find out.
I know what Andy has said he's needed, and he's reached out, and he's trying to procure that amount from him. It's not the whole thing. It's not a hundred percent. So, let us work through the procurement process, let us work through the planning process, and do it the right way.
Let me, let me ask this question. You said that if people ask you for P P E., you provide it to them.
Yes.
So, if you get enough calls to say, "I want hand sanitizer," that would change the amount that you would actually need?
Yeah, again, Emergency Manager is the one with that, and he is, they are. That is part of the P P E. program, is hand sanitizer, and so the businesses have a process to get reimbursed.
Okay.
Commissioner Mariano?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner, or Commissioner, Mr. Biles?
All right, a couple items on the good news front. Both Fitch and Moody's redid a credit evaluation on the county as part of our new bond offering that's going out shortly, and both of them held us constant with what we were last time, so double A. two, and then double A. on S., or on Moody, or Fitch was double A. And Fitch's rating included a stable outlook, which puts the county in a very low credit risk category. Now, keep in mind, we're right in the middle of a pandemic where local governments and state governments across this country had significant financial distress, and that is the rating that you got, as a board, got from the two largest rating agencies in the country with respect to our new, so that says that as a board, in the process we are using to budget and expense our money is well received in New York in the way we manage our budget process and everything else. So, I just wanted to give you that bit of good news that came out over the weekend. The other one is, if you didn't see it on Friday, our unemployment rate in Pasco County is down to six point seven percent, which is, I'm not sure I was expecting to see that number until after the turn of the calendar. And not only that, when you actually dig into the numbers, ten thousand more people are working in August than were working in July, and that's a pretty substantial number. Still a little less than where we were last August, but...
Getting there.
Getting there, and getting there pretty fast. So, that's, that's, that's good for Pasco County. It's consistent across the Tampa Bay region, those kinds of numbers. So, that's, that's positive, and that's positive leading into, as we talk about budget tonight, that puts us in a pretty stable and secure position. So, that's all I had. Those two pieces of good news.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Steinsteiner?
I don't have anything that I need to talk to you about today.
Okay, thanks. Madam Clerk?
I do, I have some things. First, I passed out some goodies. So, your CAFER, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and this is new Common Sense. Let me see that, cha-ching, the sense. This is the PAFER. We've called it the Common Sense because it is the way to understand everything that's in this big boy right here. This, the CAFER provides many financial statements that are audited. You all know this, it's annually done. We have won the award in excellence in financial reporting for thirty-six years. We're waiting to see if we're gonna have it for the thirty-seventh year. They haven't posted out the award winners yet, but I wanted to let you know that, and this Common Sense is the user-friendly guide to explain, and it's much more colorful, but it explains really well the information that's contained within the CAFER itself. So, oh, and did you notice there is a cover model this year on the CAFER? It's John Blummel. I don't know if you know who, yeah. So, one of our locals is on the cover, one of our farmers.
I think we were talking about the inside cover.
Oh, no, 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 no. You're in, you're in the one-two, the other one. You're in Common Sense as well. Okay, so I wanted to let you know that the CAFER, or the audit, the annual audit, is starting November second, so my team is getting ready, your team is getting ready. It's a consolidated effort on that. I also wanted to mention our Inspector General Office. We are, we put out the questionnaire to your management team, as well as my management team, and all of you received letters as well. We're looking to, for input and feedback, so that closed up, so I just wanted to say thank you to the county and to the management of the county for that. That's going to provide input on our annual audit plan. This is the first time we're doing that, and I wanted to make it more of a risk-based audit plan, so that we're all informed about what is going to be on that plan. So, once we get that information back, the analysis will be done based upon risk, and we'll put together the audit plan, and then actually file it here in the B C C. meeting on the consent item, so that everyone can see that. We are in the Inspector General's office. We're on a journey to be peer-reviewed. Peer-reviewed is the gold standard for credibility and reliability in internal auditing. It is international standards, so we're on our way there. It's about a three-year process. We've used this first year, me being clerk, to do our first year, so we have two years left, and next year we'll have a mock review, and that's when certified auditors come in and audit our auditors. So, we'll have a, hopefully, a gold level of audits in the next, say, two-year time period. So, I just wanted to say thank you for providing the feedback on those surveys for our Inspector General's office, and just trying to raise the level of the products that we provide. And the last thing I wanted to mention, I mentioned it last time, but it's just a reminder, Monday, we will have our in-service, so we'll have our office-wide trainings will be virtual, and that'll be September twenty-eighth all day, so our office will be closed to the public and to your offices for training. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Let's see if I can talk for two hours. Just kidding. Just a few things. First one, that's census response rate. We're in the final push for the census to get everyone counted that we can. We know is, we have a population growth. We've seen it. Want to continue to encourage everyone to fill out the census, whether you do it online or if somebody knocks on your door, please go ahead and fill that out. It's obviously very important for our future, to the future of Pasco County. That can mean a lot of things when it comes to funding. In addition to that, it can also have positive implications when it comes to, you know, things like house seats that could be added to our area. So, we're doing pretty good, though. We have a great team that's doing an awesome, awesome job. September, we surpassed our twenty-ten self-response rate, so that's really strong when you think we're in the middle of a pandemic and the team's doing better than what we did in September of, no, sorry, in two thousand and ten. I think we're at sixty-six point two percent self-response rate. Our final two thousand and ten self-response rate was sixty-five point five, so I'm sure we're gonna, we're gonna make it there, so. So, thank you to all the citizens that have responded so far, but it is very, very important. It just takes a few minutes. I did it, I'm sure everybody here did it. I'm sure everybody I see in the audience has done theirs, too, right? Everybody nods their head, yes, we did the census. Good, good. So, Commissioners, this morning, so on the consent agenda, we passed a resolution declaring September twenty-fifth as Disabled American Veterans Day here in Pasco County. Disabled American Veterans is a nonprofit organization. They're celebrating a hundred years of service to those that have served our country. The organization is dedicated to empowering veterans to lead high-quality lives with respected dignity, and they help veterans and their families navigate through the V.A. process. So, we're happy that this resolution passed today, and obviously, we want to offer our continued support and celebrate all of our veterans, so. And I appreciate, Mr. Steinsteiner, your office helped expedite getting this done on today's agenda when the request came in, so thank you and your team for that. We really appreciate it. It's important that we got that done this month. One thing I do need consensus on from this board is our November B C C. location. Originally, we had a meeting in, da-da-da, the first, no, first Tuesday of November. We decided that needed to be canceled, that meeting, as we did, I think, two meetings ago, I think we did?
Yes.
Okay. Day after the election, which probably everybody in here will be up till the next day or next morning. So, we did change that. But, as you know, when we have, when we reorganize, that is always done in the county seat, always has been done in the county seat, but the November seventeenth meeting is scheduled for Newport Ritchie, so I'm asking that we can change that November seventeenth meeting to Date City, so we can stay with, obviously, their tradition of the reorganization and any, and your re-swearing ends be done in Date City. Will we deal with that?
Yep.
Okay?
I definitely am.
Commissioner Starkey?
Yeah, of course you are. You're not gonna be there.
That's right, right.
I thought it was gonna be refreshing that we didn't have to do it in Date City, and we could be where the majority of the Commissioners live, over on the west side, so I'm game for keeping it right there on the west side.
Well, again, we do have a little bit of tradition, that being the county seat for the county. I have, I have three here that are...
Tradition takes over.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you lost, though. There's four of us here that want to do it.
Oh, four? Jack, come on!
Oh, Catherine.
Tradition, county seat.
They're laying you down, and you're not here.
Yeah, see, I'm...
That'd be like the President...
I need to help with the dredge you laid, let her ride.
That'd be like the President of the United States being sworn in in, you know, I don't know, California.
Yeah?
Right?
Oh, God. Oh, God.
California.
He's always, it's always in the, it's always at, yes, it's always in the capital, which is Washington DC. Are we good?
We're good.
Okay, all right.
All right.
But thank you, Commissioner Starky, for jumping on board. But what we're going to do, hey, just so you know, what we're going to do is we're going to go ahead and change the other Dade City meeting in December to Newport Ritchie, just so you know, I should have mentioned that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, so you'll, you'll be added, you'll, we'll add a meeting on the docket for Newport Ritchie, so you're not losing out, right? Is that what you said, Mr. Biles?
Yes, sir. So what I'm hearing is November 17th in Dade City, December 8th in Newport Ritchie.
Yep. So that's what we'll do, because Newport, December 8th was supposed to be in Dade City, we're going to go ahead and switch it over here to Newport Ritchie. Yep, how about that? Even, even swap. Okay.
Okay, I suppose that's probably good for public hearings because if we're canceling the one and the east side, the west side, then we need to get them on the schedule.
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
Okay.
I always have a solution. One thing I did want to bring up, let me find it and I apologize, it came up earlier. I've got two hours still, so. I've had some requests in the past and I had another one today for some help on Causeway Boulevard, which is in Land O' Lakes. It's, it's really a private road, but it's kind of strange.
Don't say that.
No, I, yeah, no, maybe not, I don't know, they just have these really bad pot, they have these really bad potholes.
If it is a.
I don't get a lot of requests for these in that area.
If it is a truly private road, you cannot do a one-time fix. If it is a non-main.
The non-county maintained road.
If it's a road that's, that's dedicated to the public, but we don't maintain it, then you can do a one-time fix. That's, that's the rule.
Are we, are we, are we familiar with Causeway? Because you should know every road, I'm just kidding.
I've got it right here. No, I'm not, and I'm not familiar with how much it would actually cost, so.
Couple potholes.
You know, if it's, if it's something reasonable, maybe under $5,000 or something like that, we can, we can work on that.
Yeah, going back in history, again, I wasn't here in 1984, but on this board in 1984, but I think there was a petition at one time, all the way back then, to repave it, but it didn't pass and it failed. So I'm going to assume that it is not a fully private road and the public does drive on it, if it went through that process, I want to make that assumption. If we could look at that.
Validate that before we go do it more.
They just have some potholes that could, they could use some help with. It'd be great.
Hey, Mr. Moore?
Yes, ma'am.
If you could allow me to grab a little time. Last week, when my newest assistant, Derek, started, we did a tour of some of my districts of US-19. And I do want to say that we came upon someone passed out at the Wawa bus stop. He passed by it three or four times within, in an hour and he never moved. He was laying on the ground behind the bus stop, I had called the sheriff's office, because frankly, I didn't know if he was alive or not, but they were very, they were very busy with a suicide, an attempted suicide call. And then apparently at my poor Wawa there, someone passed out in the car at the pump. So they did end up coming to the Wawa, but my guy in the bus stop, outside of the bus stop had blew it on. Coming up 19 at the old Buddy Freddy's, I think, or, what's that restaurant that Rich Beckus used to eat lunch at every day? Mike Wells will know. It was red.
Bob Evans?
What was it called?
Bob Evans?
The Bob Evans, there were a group of people who live outside, I think, and ride around on bike spots in the district. And Morgan swear she watched one of them do some, some drugs up their nose. It was a very disturbing drive for a morning, there were some other things too, but I'm hopeful that the gentleman who bought the Holiday Mall is offering to give some space to the sheriff's office and to code enforcement and free space and make, I'm hoping that maybe a presence, more of a presence in that area will help deal with some of this problem. But I did drive, Mike Wells, that, that fishing store that's on 19 that also sells gun ammunition, do you know what, what intersection that is? The two or three stories building?
No, armed anglers, I'm not sure what the road is.
Yeah, I think it might be Sunray. I drove into the biggest pothole within my car because it was underwater and there, and so I'm hoping that staff, I just sent Bradford an email, but if we're talking about potholes, that one's got to get fixed right away because it's, it's very heavily traveled, it goes underwater frequently, that little corner there, when, when the state pays US-19, makes it higher and there's a dip there and just falls apart all the time and the, and the potholes, you can't see them because it's always underwater. So it's a real problem and I, I may have done damage to my car on that one.
Okay, gotcha. All righty, thank you, ma'am. All right, everybody, we're on a little bit of recess for a while and we'll see you back here at 5:15. Thank you.
All right, bye.